Welcome everybody tonight. So let's get ready to get started on the agenda and we're going to go ahead and stand for the prayer and then we're going to do the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Yep.
Let us pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, we come before you this evening thanking you for today. Lord, we ask your blessings over those that are present, every county employee, this council. Father God, we thank you, we praise you, and give you honor and glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, veritable, and just as for all.
Okay, that's great. Appreciate that, Keisha. Thank you. And before I start here, I want to wish everybody a happy Valentine's Day. So Clay, I hope you got the flowers and all that stuff for Lisa.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay. If you have to leave, I understand.
And deliver.
Okay. And deliver. Okay. All right. So first on the agenda here, we've had the agenda of February 14th. Before us, is there any additions, deletions, or corrections to tonight's agenda? Okay. Hearing none, the chair moves that the agenda be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay. Next is going to be the minutes. Council's had a chance to take a look at the minutes of January 24th. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes? Okay? Good? All right. So hearing none, the chair moves that the minutes be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay. Next on the agenda here is dispersments of January 31st and February 7th and February 14th. The council's had a chance to look at all the dispersments. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the dispersments? Okay. Hearing none, okay. The chair moves that the dispersments be accepted as unanimous consent. That was tough on me. Woo! That's hard. Okay. All right. Up next is the update from the Board of Health. Dr. McGuire, you want to come on up?
Good evening.
Good evening. Well, I hope all of you are doing well tonight.
Yep. Hope everybody's healthy on your end.
Yeah. All right. So.
Down. Is it working?
All right. Perfect. It works. A miracle. All right. Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for inviting me tonight. So for those who don't know me, I'm Maria McGuire. I'm the health officer for the Talbot County Health Department. And now we are magically turning into the Board of Health. So I wanted to, since 60% of you are new on the council, I wanted to give a broad update about basically a health check-in for Talbot County and just go over a few things, just a status check on some of the health issues that, you know, so that you can get a good baseline of some of the issues that we have particular to this county, and then touch on just a couple of current issues. So just to go ahead. So as you know, you know, Talbot County, we have a nice, small population of about 37,000 people, 16,000 households. And so we have, I'm going to show a couple of slides that show how we're a bit similar to the rest of Maryland and a bit different. So we have a bit less diversity in terms of racial and ethnic makeup than some of the rest of the state. We do have almost 7% of our residents are foreign-born. We have an interesting demographic in that we have a lot of seniors in our population. So 30% of our population is actually over the age of 65, and that's almost double the rest of Maryland and actually the nation. And the interesting thing about that is we love our seniors, they contribute so much to our community, but it does have some implications for, you know, some of the health issues that we deal with in the county. And so this picture is just the population of the county compared to Maryland, and most places in the world actually have this sort of shape that's more like a triangle. And interestingly, in Talbot County, we have a more sort of rectangular shape because we have so many, you know, seniors. And then just, I wanted to throw out a few statistics about some of the, some of the touchpoints about the economics and how that affects health in the county. So the household income, on average, in Talbot County is a bit lower than the rest of Maryland. But interestingly, in Talbot County, we have the highest income disparity. And so sometimes I like to use averages and sometimes I don't. And this is a case where I don't because that has some implications about, we can't necessarily generalize too much because we have a broad range, you know, in terms of income, and that certainly affects how people live their life and how it affects their health status. And, you know, the, I guess the stereotype of our county is that we have, you know, a lot of resources, but we actually do have a poverty rate of almost 10%. And I think that's a surprise to a lot of people. Almost 30% of our population is on Medicaid, and we have about 7.4% of our Talbot residents with no health insurance. And so even though we do have a lot of resources in the county, we certainly have a decent needy population. And we do have a slightly higher population with disabilities. Our life expectancy is just a tad bit higher than the rest of the state at almost 80 years. We have about the same teen birth rate, so about 15 per 1,000 births is to a teen in the county. So that's certainly something we could always improve upon. But then there's some markers that are a little bit better than the state average in terms of preventive care. So for instance, for our prenatal care, about 84% of births, of pregnancies actually get early prenatal care, which is a really good sign. There's certainly room for improvement there, though, because we want that to be 100%. And then in the past year, most children did get a well checkup and a dental checkup. And certainly that's improved compared to the rest of the state of Maryland. So those are some areas where we're doing pretty well. I underlined some areas where we're a bit worse off than the rest of the state. So for instance, in our smoking, and this does include vaping, actually, when we talk, especially about the teenagers, we do have a bit of a higher rate of smoking. And so that's certainly something that has implications for health issues down the line. And then we also have a bit of a higher rate of asthma than the rest of the state, and that's seen in more ER visits for asthma. We have about the average rate of obesity compared to the state and the nation, but we're seeing a lot more visits in our ER for diabetes. And one of the things I want to point out is that some of these conditions, asthma, hypertension, diabetes, obesity, and poor nutrition, those are areas where in this county, we're seeing a statistically significant difference between different racial and ethnic groups. So there's, in those conditions, there's a much higher rate in our black residents than in our white residents. So that's a disparity that we need to be aware of. And then on the flip side, in terms of high cholesterol, that's something we're seeing a lot more in our white residents. Another area that we notice in Talbot County is we do have a bit higher rate of alcohol use. And actually, the county has double the state rate of non-fatal car accidents due to alcohol use, not necessarily fatal car accidents, interestingly, but, you know, you imagine driving home from a restaurant or something and maybe hitting a tree or something. So those are some areas that are unique to Talbot County and certainly our programs and the community stakeholders we work with, we have some programs that try to focus on prevention of, you know, substance use, especially in teens and kids. And then in terms of some of the leading causes of death that we see in county residents, they actually match up really closely to the rest of the state. But one thing we do see is that we have higher rates of accidents and also Alzheimer's in our population than the state average. And my feeling is that that's likely due to our demographics with our older population. And so that is just a super brief, superficial snapshot of some of the ways that the health status of Talbot County is a little bit similar, different to the rest of Maryland, and gives an important viewpoint to consider some of the health issues that we deal with. I wanted to next touch on the opioid epidemic, which is something we're always dealing with. And we have, so this is something that really since about, you know, 2010, 11, has become such a significant aspect of our lives is opioid use. And this epidemic continues to be mostly driven by fentanyl, if you know of that drug. And that's the drug that's so much more potent than morphine and takes such a tiny amount to be fatal. And there's a lot of analogs, which are like cousins of fentanyl. One of them we see a lot is carfentanil. And what we're seeing is that in 81% of our fatal overdoses in the state, fentanyl is involved. And so this graph, it's a little hard to see, but basically the different colors involve, show different drugs that are involved in fatal overdoses. And fentanyl is this bluish-purpleish line, and you can see since about 2015, just the role of fentanyl in the fatal overdoses is really staggering. And what we're also seeing is the contamination of drugs with other sedatives mostly, things like ketamine or some other ones you may see, xylazine. And the interesting thing about these is that one of the main drugs we use to help prevent overdoses is Narcan, and these drugs are not responsive to that. So it's become an issue where we're seeing our law enforcement or our EMS having to use, you know, two or three doses of Narcan. So fortunately, our supply of Narcan, we're giving out a lot, and so it's getting to the people in need. But certainly with that amount of fentanyl, it's really hard to deal with, and we're always chasing it. And so what we're seeing, though, is that the treatment, prevention, and harm reduction strategies do appear to be helping here, especially in the mid-shore. And so in Talbot, actually, in the past year, the fatal overdoses did decrease by 15% between September 2021 and September 2022. And that was compared to a 13% decline statewide. Now, this graph shows, the red are counties where there were actually increases in fatal overdoses, and the blue counties had decreases. And the darker the blue is, the bigger the decrease. If I'd given you the numbers from July to July, it would have been a 50% decrease, but, you know, I wanted to give the most up-to-date numbers. Now, our non-fatal overdoses declined by 65% between 2021 and 2022. And actually, that was a decrease of, in 2021, we had 92 non-fatal overdoses, and then in 2022, 32. So that was a significant improvement. And then one of the things that you will hear about if you haven't already is the opioid restitution fund. And so this was a fund that was created in 2019 to receive all the funds that were awarded to the state of Maryland through the legal settlements from the manufacturers and the distributors. And so this is going to be a long-term fund. They're expected to get about $400 million to the state over 18 years from the initial settlements, and there's some other settlements that will be coming down as well. And so starting at the end of 2022, and now the first tranche of those funds should be coming out to localities. And so in 2022, Maryland established via legislation the Opioid Restitution Fund Advisory Council, and so this is a body that will provide recommendations on the use of those funds. And locally, we're working with many community partners to develop a plan of how to best use those funds here and make sure we're using the most evidence-based practices to really combat this epidemic. But it's certainly a welcome thing to have additional funding so that we can address this serious issue. I wanted to also mention that unfortunately, in the fall, we had one of our behavioral health providers close, Eastern Shore Psychological Services. But luckily, we do have a couple new providers entering the county. And one is going to offer both substance use and mental health care to adults, and then they'll also offer mental health care to children. So that's certainly welcome because over the past 18 to 24 months, we've had certainly a huge increase in demand for mental health care services. And given that we're a rural county, we just don't have quite as many resources in terms of, you know, behavioral health care providers as other locations, and also as sort of a health care hub for the five-county mid-shore region, we in Talbot County serve a lot of counties that have even fewer resources. Another provider is also implementing a residential crisis bed service, so that's a welcome change. And the thing about that service is that it can really keep individuals out of the emergency room during an acute episode and stabilize them, because what we're seeing is a lot of backup in the emergency rooms when people go in for mental health crises, and then there's no place to send them afterwards. So some news on the opioid and behavioral health services front there. And then I wanted to switch into, there we go, some of our public health emergencies. And as I was putting this together, I realized, wow, in the past year locally, we've been dealing with at least three public health emergencies, COVID, monkeypox, and avian flu. And I noticed that over the past about, you know, 10 or 13 years, there has been an increase. It's not just me thinking that it seems like we're having them all at once. And so this is interesting because, you know, the public health emergencies declared by the CDC have seemed to have increased over the past, say, five or seven years. And this encompasses everything from, you know, COVID, monkeypox, like I said, weather events, H1N1, Zika, Ebola. Now, some of these, we don't necessarily deal with in quite the same way as a larger city, but we still have to be prepared, you know, in case, say, someone with, you know, Ebola comes into the area. But this is certainly keeping us very busy, and so I wanted to talk about a couple of them. Monkeypox, which is officially now called MPOX. Last time I was here in the fall, I described, and the good news about this illness is that it's really, it really seems to have resolved in terms of the epidemic. So currently in Maryland, there's 742 cases, and three of which resulted in deaths. And 95% of those cases are in actually the eight largest counties. Luckily, in Talbot, we never actually had a case. And, you know, knock on wood, that'll remain true. And, but we have vaccinated about two or three dozen people. So we do have vaccines still available for anyone who's eligible, because there are cases here and there popping up. But luckily, that epidemic has really resolved, and as a result, the national public health emergency that was declared for that illness actually ended January 31st. So that's good news. And then another public health emergency that I'm sure you're all aware of is COVID-19. And the status of that is, I'll kind of bury my lead, is that that, you may have heard in the news, that public health emergency is planned to be ended in May, May 11th. And so as expected, we had a bit of a winter surge, certainly nothing like previous years, given just the fact that there's, you know, both natural and vaccine immunity. And so over the whole of Maryland now, we're seeing about 700 PCR cases per day. I specify that they're the cases that are tested by that PCR route because the state doesn't tally the antigen cases. And of course, now, most of the testing done for COVID is actually at home with, you know, self-tests. And so what I prefer to look at is, you know, what are the severe cases that are resulting in hospitalizations? And what we're seeing is about 400 to 500 people still hospitalized every day in Maryland with COVID. So we did see a bump over the holiday period that peaked at about 900 people hospitalized with COVID, but that has come down. And so today, we were at 479, and we're still seeing about 10 to 15 deaths per day. But this, but it is, I expect that the COVID rates will continue to decrease because we have so many people, you know, vaccinated with boosters and who've had previous infections. And, you know, given the, you know, usually in the spring, we see cases come down. And so we don't expect another surge to occur. And so that, and we're seeing that locally, too, how since December, it was basically around New Year that we kind of peaked, you know, this time around. And then through the beginning of February, we've really declined in terms of our case rates. And so here, we're seeing about four new cases a day that we are aware of. And so through the whole experience so far in Talbot County, we've had 10,070 cases that were reported to us and 110 deaths. So we're still seeing here about two to four deaths per month due to COVID locally since the start of the fall. And so again, the hope is that this will, this will continue to resolve. There's always new variants coming up that we have to be careful about, but because of the trend nationally, the public health emergency, like I said, is slated to end May 11th. And so the implications for that are something that people should be aware of because we've gotten so used to having free tests, free vaccines. And so what that means is that in terms of tests, depending on your insurance, you may have to pay for COVID testing, or at least a portion of it, after this public health emergency ends. And in terms of vaccines, the federal government basically bought up a huge amount of vaccines. So until that stockpile runs out, or until those vaccines actually expire, those can continue to be given for free. And so locally, our health department, we're still giving vaccines and testing at our COVID center over on Marlboro Avenue in Easton. We're certainly not having the demand anywhere near we used to, so we're scaling back, but we'll continue to give out vaccines, you know, until we no longer have them. And then telemedicine, some of you may not be aware of some of the changes that occurred in this realm, but it was actually really important because some of these regulations about telemedicine were loosened and made more flexible. And so those, and that allowed a lot more people to access health care during the pandemic. So some of those flexibilities are likely to be scaled back a little bit, but there's a lot of efforts in, both locally in Maryland and across the nation, to keep some of those telemedicine flexibilities available. So what we'll see is even after the end of the public health emergency, likely more telemedicine available compared to pre-pandemic times, which is a good thing in terms of access, especially to a rural county like us. And then Medicaid eligibility. So what happened during the pandemic was there was continuous eligibility, and so states are now starting to disenroll people who did not need to get their eligibility redetermined. And so that's going to be a process that'll take about a year. So we'll see a significant amount of people who lose that eligibility. So that'll be a bit disruptive. And then additional things that aren't necessarily directly health-related, such as the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, the SNAP program, was giving emergency allotments, and those are slated to end the end of February. So we're certainly seeing some changes and back to normal, you know, with that end of the public health emergency. And I wanted to switch to a couple of the respiratory illnesses that we deal with this time of year. So you may have heard in the news, the term "tripldemic." And so that involved COVID, influenza, and RSV, and we certainly did see those respiratory illnesses through the fall. Luckily, again, those behaved a bit differently than usual, so they peaked earlier than they should have, and so those rates are coming down now. And so in the, in the U.S., what we saw was the rates of influenza peaked in December. And so that's what this graph shows, and then they've pretty precipitously declined until the end of February. And in Maryland, this current year is shown with this red line. And so we peaked in Maryland in November, around Thanksgiving, and then have since come down. There's a chance that we could have flu increase in activity, but, you know, that all depends upon how the virus behaves and how people behave. So far, we've had about 3,800 people hospitalized in Maryland for flu, and we've had 56 deaths, including one child due to flu. Compared to last year, which was a bit different because there were a lot of pandemic precautions in place, the green line here shows last year's influenza trend, and it peaked in April, actually. And so this season is a lot different than last season, and it's also a lot different than what we usually see with flu, where it peaks in that sort of December to March range. And so generally, what I'm seeing with all sorts of viruses is that they're behaving a little bit differently from the past couple of years because people and viruses behaved differently the past couple of years, and so we're kind of trying to get back to normal in terms of our...
Dr. McGuire, can I ask you a question on one thing? So at the beginning of this, you said it was called triple-something?
Yeah. Yeah. This was just a term that the news used, "tripldemic."
Yeah, yeah, no problem. With three type of virus things.
Yes.
So I just want to make sure that people were clear. So when you test for COVID, does the other two show up as positive?
It depends on the test. So some of the hospitals do test that test for four, four things or more, actually, or 24 things. So it depends on the test. So if you have a test that is one of the at-home COVID antigen tests, that's just COVID.
Okay, gotcha.
But there are tests you can get that have flu as well. And in a lot of doctors' offices, like primary care offices, they can do a rapid test for flu and COVID. In ERs, they can test for RSV, COVID, flu, all at once with one swab.
Right.
Or that plus, you know, 24 others.
Gotcha.
So that's actually really nice technology to have, so we can know.
Okay. That's great. I appreciate that. I just want the listeners to understand that.
And just finishing up with, yeah, with influenza. So we do have obviously a vaccine for flu. What we're seeing this year is that the uptake rate of flu vaccination is a bit lower than normal. It's not a vaccine that we have as high rate of uptake as, say, other vaccines like the regular kid vaccines, but usually we have about 40, 45% of people get a flu vaccine. We're still deep in the winter season, so there's still time to get vaccinated, but so far, in both Maryland and Talbot County, we only have a vaccination rate of about 30%. And so the recommendation is that everyone get, six months and older, get a flu vaccine every year. So I'm here to remind everyone that that's something we should be doing, even with flu going down in terms of the prevalence currently, it can, you know, take a turn and increase through the rest of the winter. And yeah, so it's never too late to get protected against the flu. And the health department, we're actually offering free flu vaccines over at our COVID center. And so you can walk in anytime, Monday to Friday, 1:00 to 5:00, to get flu vaccine and/or COVID booster. So if that's what you need, then please stop by and we'll help you out. The other virus in the tripldemic is RSV, and that actually stands, that's an abbreviation for respiratory syncytial virus. This one is really interesting because it's one we see every year. It typically affects babies and toddlers. Everyone can get it, and usually adults and healthy people will just get a mild cold and not really notice it. But with babies and toddlers, typically, it can hospitalized them and cause them to be pretty severely ill. So we actually saw a really interesting trend this year where there was a huge peak in October in Maryland due to this virus, and it was making kids, even older kids, really, really sick. And that's when the hospitals were just jam-packed full of kids, and there was no, you know, Tylenol or Ibuprofen on the shelf. So that is an interesting virus because that usually peaks somewhere between December and February, and it just behaved completely differently this year. It also behaved differently last year in that it peaked in the summer, so that was very unexpected. And this is an illness, this is a virus where we don't have a vaccine available. For very few highly-at-risk infants, there's a medication, but there's really not much we can do to prevent that other than, you know, good hand washing and, you know... very unexpected. Um, and this is, uh, of an illness, uh, this is a virus where we don't have a vaccine available. Um, for very few highly at-risk infants, there's, um, there's a, a medication, but there's really not much we can do to prevent that other than, you know, good, uh, hand washing and, and, you know, staying home when you're sick and everything. So that is what's going on with our typical winter viruses. Um, and so the, the good news is that they're all trending down currently, even though we're in the middle of, of winter. Um, and I wanted to just give out a little PSA about American Heart Month. So given it's Valentine's Day, um, February is heart month. So let's remember our heart. And like I said before, um, heart disease is the num- number one killer of Talbot residents. And it, uh, about 245,000 Marylanders actually do have coronary heart disease. Um, and so that is the most common cause of, of heart disease. Um, but luckily, 80% of heart disease and strokes can be prevented, um, by knowing your risks. So one way to know your risk is to make sure you know your blood pressure and also get your cholesterol. Those will, if you know those, then you can act to lower your risk by making healthy choices. And so, um, generally there's four ways you can make healthy choices to lower your risk of heart disease and stroke, including regular physical activity, quality sleep, um, eating heart-healthy foods with, you know, uh, low saturated fat and high fiber in vegetables and managing stress. Um, and the interesting thing about heart attacks, um, in case you didn't know, is most of them occur in the mornings and most of them occur on Mondays. And so, um, so it's a good idea.
So we should avoid Mondays?
We should avoid Mondays, Monday mornings. Yeah. And so, you know, I don't know if it's that thought of that sort of, uh, anxiety and starting your week or not, but, you know, stress management and sleep are actually extremely important. It's not just if you can run a mile. Um, and so, you know, those are things to be mindful about. And there's some good resources about heart month at the National Heart Lung and Blood Institute website and, um, a website, uh, that the CDC has called Live to the Beat, um, where you can learn about what you can do to keep your heart healthy and also about CPR. So that is a, a brief update, um, uh, to you guys. And thank you for, for your attention and I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay. Or thank you. It's great. Okay. I'll start, start down here, Mrs. Haye.
Yeah, I just want to say that you have some awesome staff that's been testing for COVID. I've had COVID twice. And, um, every time I went to the center to be tested, I mean, awesome nurses there and just, just great employees. So I just commend you on how they handled the COVID testing and, um, thank you. And just tell your staff.
Thanks. I will tell them. Thank you.
Thank you for all that you do. Um, I did have two questions. One is the ORF Advisory Council. Um, is there an Eastern Shore representative or representatives on that council?
I know there are representatives on that group from the Eastern Shore. I don't know if in legislation it's required that there be one from the group, but I, I know there are. Um, and, and I don't know if we count Cecil County as Eastern Shore or not. Sometimes we do. There's certainly the, the health officer from that county is on that council.
I just, I just wanted to make sure our voice is heard. And the local group that oversees the plan that they come up with, um, you said that there's one for the Eastern Shore. What counties are included?
Um, so when I meant local, I meant Talbot County. Um, and so, yeah, I, I could dive deep in all this stuff. But, uh, yeah, so what we're using locally is our local, uh, drug and alcohol, uh, committee. And so that is, and so we're actually meeting next week or two. Uh, uh, and so, you know, Department of Social Services, Health Department, Sheriff's Office, Law Enforcement, um, and Midshore Behavioral Health, which is our local behavioral health authority, um, are some of the many members on that group, um, that are working together to develop strategies to, you know, use this funding and figure out how the county could best, you know, benefit from the, the funds.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Lesser?
Uh, you told us a remarkable story about the, uh, decline in, in, uh, in, uh, the opioid epidemic. For, for years now, we've been hearing only bad news on that front. And so to hear good news on this front is something, uh, uh, that caught my attention. Uh, you credited, uh, that decline to, uh, to some of the, the, uh, the efforts being put forth, uh, in, I guess, prevent, prevention and treatment. And could you tell us more about, uh, how that, how that is occurring?
Yeah, sure thing. So, so certainly one of the, um, when, when you think about something as embedded as the opioid epidemic, you really have to approach it from many directions. And so in terms of, one of the more important things, the more useful things that have, has occurred is the, uh, distribution of Narcan, which can really, you know, change a fatal overdose to a non-fatal one because it, it blocks that opioids effect, um, and can really prevent, uh, the deaths from occurring in, in the moment. And so that's something where I don't have the, I didn't show that, but, um, we have some really great data where we distributed, um, actually across the mid-shore, much more Narcan than even our target goal, something like, I think, three or four times as much as we wanted to. And so we're doing a lot of, uh, teaching, both the health department and the, and, uh, law enforcement are doing a lot of teachings on how to use Narcan, um, and trying to get that out there. And, um, in terms of, uh, prevention, uh, one of the activities that we do is, uh, go into schools and, uh, meet with groups and, and talk about, you know, what are opioids and what's addiction? And then upstream from that is actually, um, making sure we invest in, um, you know, mental health for, for everyone so that we can prevent, um, you know, prevent the addictive behaviors before they start. Um, and so, so really it's kind of a, a wide range of, um, of strategies you need to have. Um, and I think just there's so much awareness now. Um, we can credit the Sheriff's Office a lot with the Project Purple, um, for raising awareness. And so, um, I think now where we're starting to see and, and, you know, I can guess as to exactly, uh, I can speculate on the cause of the decline from 2021 to 2022, you know, but, um, uh, you know, we, we won't really know if that trend continues, of course, but, um, and, and this is really the first year that we've seen that, that decline in Maryland. So, um, yeah, but it really takes, it takes a village to, uh, to, uh, really combat that. And that's one of the reasons why we're excited anytime we can get providers who, in this space, um, uh, you know, who can provide the, um, necessary treatment because it's, it's a long treatment for, for people suffering from substance use disorder.
Thank you. And well done.
Thanks.
Mr. Stapp?
Yes, Dr. McGuire, thank you. I appreciate the updates. I, um, I did some preparation here. I had some questions that, that I had as well as some that constituents had that I wanted to, to ask you, but a couple more popped up during your presentation. So a couple of questions. Um, a lot of focus on the triple, you would call it tripledemic, right? Um, but you, in your, in your presentation here, we talk about, you know, heart, uh, you know, heart issues are the number one, you know, cause of death here in Talbot County. I mean, are we doing anything to, to focus on that? I mean, what's, what, what do you feel we could do better there to, to help?
Right. Well, and so with, with heart issues, uh, you know, that is one thing that it's, uh, a lot of, um, our, our physical activity, our, our daily choices in life contribute to. And so that, again, that's something where when you think about heart health, you think about what's the appropriate nutrition, um, what's the, you know, physical activity we're getting. And I didn't actually include these statistics on the presentation, but in Talbot County, um, compared to the average in Maryland, we actually have a bit less reported physical activity, um, and, uh, less access amazingly, um, to, um, uh, you know, parks, uh, and, um, places where people can exercise, which I actually don't know if I believe, but, because it doesn't seem to make sense. But at least on the behavioral risk factor surveillance survey, the reported physical activity of, of moderate or higher activity is lower for Talbot County than it is for the rest of the state. And so that's, that's one thing. We can always encourage exercise. Um, you know, the recommendation is about, say, 30 minutes of exercise about every day. Um, and then, you know, counseling on nutrition. And so actually today there was, um, our Local Health Improvement Coalition, which is a five-county mid-shore coalition to improve the health of all residents in the region. Um, they, they had a, their, uh, quarterly or bi-monthly meeting and we're talking about, um, different ways to, uh, both decrease diabetes and encourage overall health. And, and one of the ways is trying to teach, um, young people and students about healthy, you know, nutrition and, and starting early in terms of getting, um, healthy nutrition. Uh, and so, um, so again, it's, it's one of those things that you have to approach from several angles, you know, and start early. And, and we can all, I'm sure most of us in this room can admit that we probably don't exercise as much as we, we, we want to.
Yeah. It, it definitely sounds like we have some room to maybe to try to get that, you know, get that message out, especially here. And that's the number one. If we can, you know, somehow get that, you know, it sounds like we have the, we have the steps in place, but if we can do a better job of getting that out, that would hopefully make a, a big improvement on the county.
Right, right.
Well, thank you. Um, a couple more here. Um, the, the slide you have in here for COVID, uh, the end of COVID National Public Health Emergency, May 11th. How is it that, that we can predict a date that, that's going to go? Is that trends? Is that?
Yeah. And so this, this is something that the, this is a federal decision. Uh, and so, so what the CDC did, and of course I wasn't in the room, but, um, they're looking at trends and they're looking at, um, hospitalization rate and death rate and vaccination rate. And what's happened is just the accumulation of, um, of immunity from both natural immunity from people who've had COVID one or two times, you know, plus vaccination rate means that overall most people are protected, um, to, to some extent, you know. Uh, we, we will always live with COVID. It's, it's not going to go away, just as the other coronavirus cousins are always still out there. Um, but what they're predicting based on, um, what's going on around the world, you know, um, because sometimes waves happen in other places. Um, but also what's happening here in terms of, um, the general trends and what we've seen is across the nation since, um, the new year, basically the COVID rates go down. And what we've learned over the past couple of years is that really, uh, the peaks have always been in January. And so once we get past January and get people more outside and less stuck indoors, um, and just the behavior of viruses, um, circulation kind of, uh, you know, changes, uh, with, with the seasons, um, we, we just predict, obviously if something majorly changes, they'll change course, but that's, that's really not expected.
So basically just it's an assumed date based upon historical trends?
Yeah. And, and, and the public health emergency, what happened was, um, it's, it's always instituted on a, um, on a certain date and is for about three months. And so they have to renew it. And so they made the choice in January not to renew it again. And so then they decided on, on a date. And, and what that also means is, um, what the federal government can do and, uh, one of those things is, you know, funding. And so, you know, we don't expect there to be new COVID funding and we don't expect Congress to, you know, take any action related to COVID, basically.
Yes. I, I saw some of the, the, the information on the website or on our website here in Talbot County. Looks like we're about one hospitalization a day or less than one hospitalization per day. Right now, okay. That's very good to hear.
Yeah. It, it's, it's been lower and, um, you know, sometimes statistically, because our population's so small, it's hard to really get good trends, you know? One hospitalization looks like a real high rate sometimes. But yeah, we, we've been, um, keeping it low. And unfortunately we are still seeing people hospitalized and deaths occurring, but much, much lower than certainly previous months and years.
What would you say we've, you know, you, being that it's, we've, in this about almost, gosh, almost three years now, I mean, uh, in regards to COVID, what, what, what would you say we've, we've learned or what you think we could do better next time, just in regards to i- if this comes out again?
That's a great question. Yeah. That's a great question. Um, and so that's, uh, what a lot of people are now trying to pay attention to, which is, you know, what did we learn? And I'd say the biggest, um, the biggest lesson that I believe is that we need to prepare for long-term public health emergencies. Most of what we prepare for is short-term, um, uh, whether it's hurricane or, um, an, an acute epidemic. Even monkeypox was, or MPOX was, you know, a matter of a few months, to be honest. Um, but with COVID, it was year, basically years, mu- much longer than I think most people expected. And so, um, really having that idea of how can we, you know, make this a marathon and, and not a sprint. Um, and, you know, what we're seeing in the healthcare sector and the public health sector is, you know, a lot of people were just, they, they rose to the occasion and then they got burnt out and now they're, they've left. And so we, we've, there's a concern, we've lost some institutional knowledge, maybe of people who had great experience and learning opportunity during the pandemic and we want to make sure we don't lose that. And so that's one of the reasons why, you know, a lot of, uh, entities are conducting after-action reports and making sure we learn and change. And so I know at, um, our local health department, we're looking at, uh, all of our, you know, emergency plans, um, which we've always had in place and trying to frame them both through the lens of a long-term public health emergency. Um, and then we're also considering other types of impacts like, um, you know, cybersecurity emergencies, that kind of thing. So there's certainly a lot to be learned. Um, and, you know, how, uh, I think one other thing was, um, just the importance of messaging and the importance of coalition building. So, um, things that can be applied to any, any emergency, really.
Awesome. Thank you. A couple more here. Some constituent, uh, constituent, sorry, constituent questions. So, um, there was a, there was a graph on our website too. This one struck me when I looked it up. Um, percent of Talbot County residents vaccinated against COVID by age is, this is on our, on our website right now. There's a couple of stats there that are statistically impossible, frankly. There's a 108% and 110% in the groups of 75 to 84 and 85 plus that have been vaccinated against COVID. Um, how do we have 108 and 110% of our population?
So what, what happens is, and there used to be a little disclaimer and then I think we ran out of room, but basically what happened is, um, when we, we tallied how many people got vaccinated, um, who gave their addresses as Talbot County. And so, um, uh, you know, there's often going to be with large data sets, you know, which you don't have time to sort of, you know, deep dive clean up and take a year to really analyze. Um, there may be some, some weird things, um, like that, but it could be that we, I know that we had a lot of people come to Talbot County and I don't know if they gave their address or people move or whatever, but, um, so what actually the CDC did to clean that up, um, because this was the case also in Montgomery County and Howard County and a couple others, was they were getting rates above 100%, uh, was they just maxed it out at 95%. Um, what we did see too was that some people, very few, chose to get multiple vaccines, more than was recommended. Um, and so they were kind of counted more than once perhaps, you know? Um, and so, and another thing that we have here, maybe, um, not a huge number of people, is we do have, um, people with, you know, second homes or who visit. Um, and so certainly during the sort of peak times of the pandemic, we had a lot of people who kind of moved, whether permanently or temporarily, to the Eastern Shore. And, um, since we do have some, you know, second homeowners here, they gave their address as Talbot County. And we were basing our sort of denominator on the best population we have. The, the population number I gave initially was the 2022 estimate, but the number we used in those statistics was the 2019 estimate, which was the most, um, current one. And so, um, so if, if someone's not counted in our census, because you can only give one resident as your census, you know, and then that'll kind of inflate the numerator. So, um, there's a few reasons. It's, it's not perfect data. Yeah. So that is statistically impossible, but that's the number we had. So we just felt it was best to just be transparent about. We had X number of people, you know, who got it. Um, and, uh, and, and just, you know, add the disclaimer, you know, some people may have been counted twice or this data's not perfect. Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Um, yeah. So I, and, and on the same report, just looking at some of the trends, I mean, it seems like, you know, the, the trends are going down as far as vaccinations. Um, you know, I guess as you, as you get to second boosters and bivalent boosters.
Right.
Uh, looks like the trend is going down and folks getting that. I mean, I knew, I, I tried to research and possibly figure out why that may be. I mean, I had found some CDC stuff that showed, you know, potential side effects, serious side effects like, uh, myocarditis, pericarditis, uh, thrombosis. Um, and i- is that, is there a link there, you think, that of why folks aren't, you know, why the trends are going down?
Yeah. And, and there were very few cases of those, um, such that, you know, it, um, Yeah. And, and there were very few cases of those, such that, you know, it was still recommended. And so one of the things that the CDC Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices does is they constantly, and, and those committee meetings are public and you can watch them, they, they debate, you know, the, the pros and cons, the risks and benefits, because every, every health intervention has a risk, whether it's giving IV fluids or not, you know. And so, and so with those particular issues, in certain populations, there may have been a slight increase in the risk of myocarditis. But the, but the counterfactual was actually if you got COVID, your risk of myocarditis was so much higher, about two or three times higher. And so, the, the risk benefit calculation for that is that it's better to get a vaccine where you're likely to be protected from a much more serious outcome, including secondary effects of COVID. Because one thing I didn't touch on was a lot of the secondary complications we're seeing from COVID, which is not only the long COVID, but also we're seeing increased rates of type 1 diabetes in children. We're seeing increased rates of certain autoimmune conditions. And so, so I think some people may have been afraid of some side effects, but the vast majority of side effects were very temporary and, and typical in terms of, you know, achiness or whatnot, fever. And I think what actually accounted more so for the lower rates of, say, booster, was just the change in, in the experience of COVID, where by the time the boosters came out, you know, people, it, it wasn't as scary, let's say. And so the boosters first came out basically a year and a half ago, right? And so at that time, we weren't seeing, it seemed like a manageable disease that we could potentially live with. And so I think a lot of people made the calculation in their own head of, well, I'm a healthy whatever year old, and I don't need a booster. And so I, I think that's what happened. We, certainly in this county with our demographics, we had, we actually have the, I believe it's the third or fourth highest rate of COVID vaccination overall compared to other Maryland counties. And in our seniors, we have a very high rate of vaccination uptake. And so what you, what you're probably also seeing is that the younger age groups have, have lower because
Yeah, it's considerably, it's considerably, it's almost nonexistent, 10% or less.
Right, right, exactly. And so you've got your individuals, like say, me, who I'm a pediatrician. And so my daughter was first one to get her vaccines and boosters, you know. And I, I did the risk calculation. And then other people did a different risk calculation that they, they didn't think it was worth it. It's definitely still recommended by all the, by all the, you know, public health and medical societies to, to get COVID, you know, vaccine, vaccines. And COVID vaccines were added to the childhood immunization schedule as a, as a recommended vaccine going forward, too.
Okay. And I guess, I guess I'll wrap here. I have a few more questions. Maybe we can just have a, have a separate discussion on it. But just, you bring up the, the COVID Center on Marlboro Road.
Yeah.
I don't see hardly anybody there. I mean, I've, you know, if I'm having breakfast across the street or something, I, I don't see a lot of cars coming in and out of there. I mean, just, is, is that facility even needed anymore? Or can we move that operation to the, to the health department?
Good question.
Just to save taxpayer dollars here, because it just doesn't look like it's being used.
So, so, yeah. And so, decommissioning that space is something we've been talking about for months and when to do that. And so basically, we wanted to get through the sort of winter surge. And so assuming that, you know, flu, COVID, whatever, was going to surge in sort of the December-January timeframe, we wanted to be available, because we serve not only Talbot residents, but, you know, other, other residents. And so, you know, that is, there's very specific COVID funding. It expires in June. And, and so
Where do we receive that funding from? Is that, is that federal?
The federal government, yeah.
Okay. And, and so they're funding that facility?
Uh, yeah, COVID funds. There's very specific COVID funds that, that we received. Yeah, that can only be used for that purpose.
Okay, thank you.
And so if, if it's not used, it's not used and goes back to the federal government. So, so our take is, again, it's a risk balance. So we will be, we, we have been scaling back hours, and we are continuing to do that. We haven't publicized exactly when we're going to scale back, but we're, we're trying to leave that space and figure out when is the best time to do that.
Sounds like before, before June, is what it would sound like then?
Yeah, well, our fiscal year ends June 30th, yeah. And so you never know, though, because we get told, oh, that funding is, hey, we've decided you can have it. So, you know. But, yeah, over the, I anticipate over the next few months, we, we won't need a center. And then we just have to make sure that that service is available and we, and that we direct people to go to where they need to, whether it's their own primary care doctor, or the pharmacy, or where, or the health department, to make sure that if there is a demand, because there still is a demand. It's very small, but there is still is one. So we just want to make sure that people don't, you know, have questions about that.
Thank you.
Good, good. Okay, well, I appreciate it. Thank you. Thanks a lot. Okay, talk to you soon. Okay, moving on here, we've got the economic development and tourism. If you guys want to come on up. Hello, Ms. Cassandra.
Hey there.
Ms. Judy, how are you?
Thanks.
Do, do we need, we need a third chair, don't we? Yeah, we got third wheel over here. We got third wheel, you know? Yeah, we do. Look, you're, you're, I was gonna say, exactly.
Six feet.
Don't you, look, you're pretty important right now, so you're coming up, okay?
So first of all
How you doing, guys? You want to introduce, introduce yourself to the public, please?
I, I will introduce myself. I'm Cassandra Van Uzser. I'm your Director of Economic Development and Tourism for Talbot County. And first, let me say, Happy Valentine's Day. It's great to see all the color in the room. I didn't wear my red. I've been chastised for that already, but it's great to see you all. And my colleague, Rich Sutter, in the back with his, you must note his tie, which says love.
I got you.
Has little hearts on it. So it's good to see everybody. And hopefully, everyone's out tonight, except for these two, which I cheated out of a night out with their honeys. But everybody's out at restaurants and the cash registers are ringing.
Good.
And Talbot County is full of lovebirds tonight. So
That's great.
I appreciate your time, because I know that the sacrifices you all make to be here. And I do think it's important that we talk about economic development and tourism from time to time. Now, these two people who I robbed out of a cozy night, I want to introduce them as well. I brought the big guns tonight. So Ken Casell is my Chairman of the Economic Development Commission.
Nice.
And it's very important that you note that it's a good year for him to be the Chairman. They are our largest single employer in Talbot County, is the healthcare industry and U M Shore Regional Health. So our largest employer. And also, Ken has proposed what I think will be the largest economic development project probably ever to happen on the eastern shore, when we get that hospital moving. So Ken, thank you for your service. These are volunteer positions. And then Captain Judy Bixler has been my chairman for a long time on the tourism board. By the way, I've been here 10 years in February. So February the 4th was my first day, and Captain Judy's been by my side the whole time. Not only is she my chairman, but she's the State Tourism Development Board Chairman. And we both serve on that state board. And so Judy is a powerhouse in the tourism industry. So like I said, I brought the big guns tonight. And we're here to talk about economic development and tourism. And I'm excited to be here. This is my first presentation, real presentation to the council. And we have so many different things going on, it's hard to sort of curate it. So I'm going to start with our vision, mission, and value proposition, just to make sure we're all on the same page. When we put together our strategic plan in 2018, and we're coming up on a new strategic plan, our vision was that we have strong communities, empowered businesses, and that we offer innovative solutions for helping our businesses start and grow and be successful here in Talbot County. And our mission is to enhance and promote business-friendly environment for current and prospective enterprises, and to advocate for policies that benefit businesses. So if you all are working on something that isn't policy-oriented, certainly, we bring information to the table that I think can help you do that. And we're advocating for those policies that benefit businesses. And then, of course, we serve as a conduit to resources for businesses. That's what the value we bring to the business community, is that we know who to tell you to talk to about financing, or regulations, or what have you. And also, we help businesses remove those barriers that stand in their way. And so when somebody has a problem, often they'll come to us, or the county manager will refer them to us. So we help remove those barriers. And then one thing I didn't really put on there is the marketing and communications aspect that we do. And I always say that I'm Talbot County's chief storyteller. And, you know, it is our goal and our mission to tell those stories, those great business stories. We have so many fantastic businesses here in Talbot County, and not just in tourism, but all across the board. We have great businesses and business owners and managers here in Talbot County. So I just wanted you to understand, you know, the way we see what we do. So let's do a 2022 overview. And this is important, because it's going to set the stage for what we're going to do in 2023. Additional resources was sort of the buzzwords for 2022. So we, the pandemic brought an unprecedented amount of funding across the board. Dr. Maguire talked about that. And economic development benefited from that. That did not take away our day-to-day work, but we added some things. And we'll talk about the four things that I have listed here in depth. First, the Rural Economic Development Fund. I know you all probably know about this. We've talked about it at nauseam. I'm just going to give you an update and give you the numbers. So the governor put in his budget last February, $50 million. That $10 million for each of the five regional councils. We are part of the Midshore Regional Council, along with Carolina and Dorchester Counties. And our regional council decided to divide the money evenly. We got $3.233, $333 million to distribute amongst projects. The county council approved 14 projects, and five of those are county projects, four of which I oversee and one Ray oversees. And we have until 2024 to complete those projects. So I just wanted to let you know where we are. We worked with the Office of Law, the County Manager's Office, and Finance Office to develop a sub-recipient agreement. It's multi-pages and down to fine details. But all of those have been signed by our sub-receipients. They received a copy of those by registered mail. We have processed advances for three organizations. We made it possible for each recipient to receive up to 25% of their money in advance, so that that didn't put a burden on small organizations. We had three requests in advance. We have processed those through the Finance Office with Martha's help, and they have those in hand. And the other money will come to the organizations on a reimbursement format. It's very important to us that our projects meet their goals, their milestones and deliverables. And we are monitoring that every step of the way. So we've just had our first report around due. All of the reports have to turn in a monthly report to the Midshore Regional Council. I get a copy of those. If at any time you want to see where any of the projects are, I can tell you, we can pull their report. And we are monitoring those closely. We will be setting up a mechanism in my department to monitor those before we give reimbursements. And that's clearly stated in our grant agreements. So we're moving forward those. And we'll be reporting out on those projects as they come to fruition. I wanted to touch on this one briefly. We've all talked about this one, the Eastern Shore Economic Resiliency Toolkit. This was part of our EDA funding. We had the grant with the Midshore Regional Council, 10 partners. That ended in June. After 50-plus meetings, every Tuesday at 2:00, you can find me, every other Tuesday, you can find me on a Zoom meeting with these same people. And what we've built is tools you can use. If you want information about the economy, or about the economy on the eastern shore, or about a certain business segment, we can typically find that on the Delmarva Index. And our toolkit became part of the Delmarva Index. But what's important to note is that it continues. We have a survey that we do every six months of eastern shore businesses. I'm going to go over some of the results here momentarily. And our success was recognized, not just in the state, not just in the nation, but internationally. We have been awarded accolades for the work that we've done on this project. So I'm very proud of that. I never thought, Keisha, I'd have an IEDC award, but I have one. So we're, we're proud of the work that we've done. And the EDA was so impressed by the work that we did, they gave an additional $1 million to the State of Maryland Department of Commerce. And this work continues. We've just finished a manufacturing dashboard. We've done a state parks dashboard. And there will be several more tools that will come out of that money. So again, every other Tuesday, come to my office at 2:00 if you want to meet with these people. And we've now expanded the partnership to include the Department of Commerce and many others around the state. So if you need information, you want information, we can direct you on how to find that. We did an ARPA survey last year, where we polled our constituents, our citizens. We had more than 600 people. If you have an afternoon where you have nothing to do, and you want to read 96 pages of, of the input that we got from people, it is a very informative document. And Councilman Lesher led this, this project. 45% of those people answered that the expansion of broadband was important to them. And so we allocated $1.75 million of the ARPA funding, in addition to all that we've done, which, you know, includes that USDA grant that we got, and many of the other grants that Eastern Utilities has gotten, and Chop Tank is working on this as well. So we allocated that money. Broadband is so important to the economic future of Talbot County, to the health of Talbot County, to the education of Talbot County, that I just wanted to stress that, you know, we did work with Councilman Lesher and the group, the ARPA group from the county, to allocate this fund, this funding to broadband. Now, we also work with many, many partners, but the Small Business Development Center, we help fund. You'll see this in my budget request. We fund them at a level of $6,000 a year, which in my mind is not nearly enough. But that's what they ask for, and that's what we appropriate to them. And I just want to point out, we have 43 active clients in their fiscal year. They're on an October to, through September fiscal year. We had 43 active clients with them last year. Now, those 43 people, and Councilwoman Hayth can tell you, Councilwoman Hayth can tell you, that, you know, this is a very important service. These 43 are working through the process to either start or expand a business. So we are working with them on business plans, on cash flow, on valuation of their businesses. And it's, everyone who comes to us with a small business idea, we refer them for free and confidential counseling to the Small Business Development Center. We have two counselors who are assigned to Talbot County, that's Rich Loffler and Greg Bartu. And they share office space with me over at Bay Street. They're there on a Tuesday afternoon, and also meet with them monthly to review all of our clients. A lot of these are long-term clients. And, you know, we've been through them with several different things. Sometimes it takes a long time for their projects to come to fruition. But this is an essential service to us here in Talbot County. And again, we do help fund them and work with them often. Now, let's shift gears just a little bit. And I'm going to point out some things about the survey. Now, as I was working on my PowerPoint, I ended up with about 30 slides just on the survey. But I took those out, and I'm going to condense it down for you. Now, this is very difficult to see here. In fact, I can't even see it myself. But, so those on, online are probably having a hard time seeing this. But there's some important things, and you all probably can see it on your screens there, that we need to talk about. And the biggest concerns, and this is right there in the middle, the top three impact on price increases on businesses. Number one, payroll and benefits. Number two, fuel and transportation. Number three, utilities. This will not come as a surprise to you, as we are experiencing those same things in the local government. But those are the things that our businesses have, and by the way, this is businesses all across the eastern shore. All nine counties participate in this survey. But these are the things that are, are concerning people. We put some questions in there about remote work. We've heard Anna Bond Basu and other economists talk about how important it is to offer remote, remote work options to employees now that, you know, a lot of employees don't want to come back to work if they can't work remotely. And we asked that question. And 54% of the businesses that offer remote work, which still it's a relatively small number on the eastern shore, but 54% said that it is helpful in recruiting and retaining employees. This is something just for us to be aware of and know about as, as something that is happening here across the eastern shore. You know, we have more than 4,000 non-employer establishments just in Talbot County, which means that a lot of people are, they, these are businesses without W2 employees. means that a lot of people are, they, these are businesses without W-2 employees. We already have a lot of people who are working remotely, but the people who answer this survey are largely business owners or managers, and so we're not really hitting that demographic of our businesses. So we have a lot of people working remotely on the eastern shore and particularly in Talbot County, but this is businesses offering that to their employees. And then the barriers to starting and expanding, expanding a business, and this has flipped as we've done this survey now. I think this is our fourth one. Labor costs have really risen to the top as the number one concern. And, I can't read that, financing, and is, has really risen to the top as well, and that was not a concern when we started this survey two years ago. Inflation is very much a concern, and regulations has dropped down, and that was much higher than it is now, but regulations are more of a concern, I think, when the, when things are easier. And 43% believe that we are in a recession, according to the economist that we had speak, Dan North, one of the top economists in the country who spoke at our business series the other night, says that's not true yet, but he's predicting that we will be in recession. But perception counts, and 43% of the people answering this survey said that they believe we're in a recession. Also, 83% believe that our household incomes are falling below the cost of living, and I think that that is significant too. But there is very much a bright spot, and here is the bright spot. So when we asked, do you think your business or institution will be operating locally five years from now? An overwhelming yes. And not only that, but almost 35% of the businesses who answered this survey said that they will be growing within five years. So that is a bright spot. And when we worked on the, you have a full report. If you have any questions about the full report, you can read that. If you have any questions, I'm happy to circle back with you and answer anything. But when we were writing that, way down in the report was this statistic, so I sent John Hickman a note and said, I believe you buried the lead. You know, there are concerns, but the bright spot is that our businesses are confident about the future. And just in case you think that this is not Talbot County saying these things, your next slide shows that 25% of the people who took this are from Talbot County. Our businesses have been superstars when it comes to answering this survey. Now, our number was down. We didn't have as many people take the survey, so we're trying to work on how to better engage people and let them know how important this is, because this is something that we plan to continue into the future, every six months, asking these questions, modifying these questions to current standards, and then looking at the information over time, which I think is very valuable. Now, quickly, we'll turn our attention to 2023. So it's go time, and I just laid out for you why it's go time. We have a lot of projects in the hopper. We have a small department, and it is very important that we make good on the promises we made on that Rural Economic Development Fund. So we're going to be working really hard to do those things. Also, we came out of the gate swinging on, or gate, gate running, I guess, mixing my metaphors there, at the beginning of the year here. So we had a business resource fair that really was our first stab at doing this, and we had over 100 people attend this event, and for the first one, we were very excited. We partnered with the Building African American Minds, with Talbot Mentors, with Chesapeake Multicultural Resource Center, and others to sponsor this event. And the people who came are budding business owners, or they already have a business and they wanted to know how to grow it. I think we really overwhelmed our Small Business Development Center counselors because they have a wave. I think you'll see that number of clients grow because we've been referring people over and over to them. So we had 12 of our resource partners there. It started out as a financing resources, Maryland Capital Enterprises. The Eastern Shore Entrepreneurship Center has a revolving loan fund, and trying to bring those people to the table so that if you have a financing need, then we're connecting you with that resource. So I was delighted by the response to this event. We had a lot of people turn out, and so now we'll be following up with a job fair in March, also sponsored by BAM and the same partners. And we're talking about how to make this more successful in the Spanish-speaking community. We had translated some of our materials. We'll be translating more, but we've sort of done a debrief at the end to try and think about how we can more adequately connect with our Spanish-speaking audience. We started a business speaker series, Let's Talk Business, and we started out on February the 6th with, as I said, a renowned economist, Dan North, who happens to be from St. Michael's and is remote working largely from his house in St. Michael's now. But he gave a great overview of the economy, and I have his slides. He just sent me his slides. I spoke to Jessica this morning about getting those to you, and we also had that videotaped. We're waiting for the final cut on that. When I get that, I'll send it to you because it was very interesting, some of the things that Mr. North had to say. Our next speaker series, our guest is here with us, Ken Kazzell, will be speaking about the new proposed Regional Medical Center, and that's on April the 6th, March, March the 6th, sorry. And then April the 3rd, Dick Willey, who's the former president of Purdue Agribusiness, will be talking about the grain situation and how the Ukraine, Ukrainian war is impacting grain prices. So we're really looking forward to what this, we had a great turnout for our first one. We expect that to continue as people really want to know the information. We have great experts living in our own community. We're going to shift gears yet again and talk a little bit about tourism. I can do a full presentation about tourism, and Captain Judy and I would like to come back during National Travel and Tourism Week in May and actually do a full-on presentation. But as I said, we came out of the gate running, and we debuted our new website, tourtalbot.org. We rebuilt it when I very first came here in 2013, and we've spent over a year redoing it. It is a content-heavy resource that is great for visitors but also for locals, and I think it makes the best use of modern technology. I want to give a shout out to my colleague, Krista Boothby. You know, I come in and say, move that there, turn that blue, make that here, use that picture, those types of things. She really has been in the weeds every day making this come to fruition. This is the website that I envisioned when I started this job. I am extremely proud of this. And I don't recommend this, but we are about to launch a second website, so I don't recommend doing two at a time, but we are relaunching our FrederickDouglasBirthplace.org website. We're hoping to have it done by today, which is his 205th birthday, but we have really made great strides in telling the Frederick Douglass story here on many fronts and our web presence. We continue to pursue that digital-first approach with tourism. We are working with our partners on the eastern shore to do an interpretive plan for the Chesapeake Country All-American Road. Two years ago, we cut the ribbon on the All-American Road here in Talbot County, and it's, the road runs from Cecil County all the way down to Chrisfield. And we are, have formed an alliance, and it's with our three heritage areas and the nine counties, and are really looking at how to pursue opportunities for regional storytelling and more marketing along these lines. And then I'm going to stop here, but I do want to invite you all on Saturday to the flag raising and ribbon cutting for the tourism deliverables for the Frederick Douglass mural. And so, Mr. Callahan, you helped get this to come to fruition when we put the mural up, but now we've added the details. So we've put the spit and shine on this thing, and we've added some benches for people to be able to sit and admire the mural, and also have put up an interpretive panel. The Town of Easton has been our partner in this, and they have done that work, put up the interpretive panel, and have mulched out there, and so we'll be doing that ribbon cutting on Saturday at 3:00. I think it's on your calendars, and I'd love to see you all there. I'm going to stop there, and I'll take any questions you may have, or also let Captain Judy or Ken weigh in on, on what they'd like to say.
I'll go first and I'll be brief. I just wanted to just probably say what everybody is thinking, and that is that how fortunate we are to have Cassandra helping lead our economic development and tourism for the county. It's just a pleasure to work with you, and it's a pleasure to work for the council so that I can get you the information.
That's great. That's great. I appreciate that.
And when it comes to thank yous, we want to thank you, the council, for supporting the Economic Development and Tourism Office. It's really an important function here in Talbot County. Tourism gives back. We make an impact, and our businesses, tourism really is economic development. So from my perspective, that's where things come from, and we really thank you for your support and hope you'll continue to support us because we are sound investors. That's our new tagline from the state, and we really feel that it's been a great opportunity for us to be able to be a part of the state tourism development board because we've gotten Talbot County on their map.
Great. That's good.
We really have, it's been really a pleasure to be a part of it, and having Cassandra there now as well, it's just great.
It's great.
Thank you again.
Okay. Mrs. Hayth?
Well, I'm a little biased, of course, but great job, colleague Cassandra. I really appreciate all that you do, and, you know, economic and economic development and tourism, like Judy said, you know, tourism is economic development, which is so, so true. So thank you for presenting to us this evening.
Thank you.
Ditto.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you for the update, and I appreciate particularly the good news that we saw in the business sentiment survey.
Mr. Stepp?
Just again, thank you to all three of you for being here and presenting. Ken, if, just wanted to call out again just to the whole county and just congratulate you on the official filing of the certificate of need, just a little over a month ago now, right?
It has been January 6th is the date we filed.
Excellent. Excellent. Definitely a well, a huge need for our, for our community, so thank, thank you for that.
Thank you for your support.
Yeah, just one, one question, if I may, Cassandra, if, and we had kind of spoken about this earlier too. Back in October 2021, there was a partnership that was out there with the, we were a small, we were a small part of it, but we partnered with the Midshore Community Foundation, the local philanthropist, for the $50 gift cards for the students for Talbot County, for the, for those who got fully vaccinated against COVID. A lot of folks in the community reached out to me, and it just had, had some concerns with that as, you know, kind of like influencing health decisions, you know, on, on youth. Just curious if, we just wanted to confirm, we don't have any more plans in place for any programs like that in the future, do we?
We don't have any plans for that.
Thank you.
I can give you a little bit of background just briefly.
Yeah, please, thank you.
We partnered with the Midshore Community Foundation because we are that conduit to the businesses, and I don't even know who the donors were. We put no money toward it, but what we said is, if you're going to get vaccinated and if you're going to get a gift card, we want you to spend that money with our local businesses. And so it was our role to get the businesses to sign up, which is what we did. But no, we don't have any plans for that. And I will also say that if I perceive something to be overly political, I wouldn't do that because, you know, I don't ever want to make Talbot County look bad in any way.
Yeah, no, I, I never looked at it.
Your chief storyteller.
Absolutely.
I know you're not implying that, but I just want to say, say that clearly that, you know, those were extraordinary times, and we were there to try and help our businesses through that time, so.
Gotcha. Yeah, no, I just, as we had spoken about prior to, just making sure that, you know, those are decisions that are between, you know, families or individuals and their healthcare providers, so I just want to make sure that we weren't planning on doing that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And just to end it, Cassandra, you, Talbot County is so lucky to have you, and, you know, been working with you for nine years now, and you're, you're pretty special for Talbot County, that's for sure.
Thank you.
And, you know, you've been up here many times in front of us, and the knowledge you have, and the drive you have, and, and the, you know, and just trying to help these businesses and stuff, we're very blessed to have you. We really are. And to bring top-notch people like Judy and Ken with you, and that, that really just shows that these people really look up to you, and we look up to you, how professional and the experience you have, you know, for Talbot County. So we, we need to stand and give you a little applause.
So that's my Valentine.
It's Valentine's Day too, you know? That's exactly right. So I just want to give you kudos, and I, and we truly mean it, you know?
Well, it is a real pleasure to serve for you and with you for the citizens of Talbot County, and I sincerely appreciate your Valentine.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks a lot, guys. I appreciate it. Okay. All right. So the next up is going to be introduction of administrative resolution here. So Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and read it to, in the record, please?
Administrative Resolution Repealing Enforcement Resolution COVID-19, adopted August 25th, 2020. Whereas on August 25th, 2020, the County Council of Talbot County, Maryland, the County Council, adopted an administrative resolution entitled Enforcement Resolution COVID-19, the August 25th Administrative Resolution, adopting appropriate enforcement rules and regulations to prevent the spread of COVID-19 in Talbot County, the county, in accordance with guidance from the Talbot County Health Officer and the authority granted pursuant to the Governor of Maryland's Executive Order 280301 and the Constitution and laws of the State of Maryland. And whereas the 25th, the August 25th Administrative Resolution requires compliance with the Executive Order Number 20080301 and sets forth penalties for non-compliance therewith. And whereas Executive Order 20080301 was last amended on May 14th, 2021 pursuant to Executive Order 21051401, and whereas Executive Order 21051401 was rescinded and of no further force and effect as of 12:01 a.m. on July 1st, 2021 pursuant to Executive Order 21061501. And whereas the county is no longer enforcing the August 25th Administrative Resolution as Executive Order Number 21051401 is no longer in effect, and whereas the County Council is desirous of repealing the August 25th Administrative Resolution. Now therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of Talbot County, Maryland, that the administrative resolution entitled Enforcement Resolution COVID-19, adopted by the County Council on August 25th, 2020, is hereby repealed in its entirety and of no further force and effect. Be it further resolved that this administrative resolution shall take effect immediately upon adoption, introduced by the County Council of Talbot County, Maryland at a regular meeting on February 14th, 2023, at which meeting copies were available to the public for inspection. Adopted by the County Council of Talbot County, Maryland at a regular meeting on February 14th, 2023, at which meeting copies were available to the public for inspection. Given under our hands and the great seal of Talbot County this 14th day of February in the year of our Lord, 2023.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Thomas, you want to go ahead and kind of walk us through what we're going to try to achieve here?
Sure. So when I drafted this, I tried to tell the story in the recitals as well.
Yep.
So, and not to rehash that too much, but the administrative resolution that was adopted by the County Council on August 25th, 2020, had certain enforcement rules and regulations pertaining to wearing face coverings and things like that. And the authority came from an executive order passed by the governor, I believe it was Executive Order 20080301. And that order was last amended in, in May of 2021, and was ultimately rescinded and of no further force and effect. So this, this administrative resolution that the county still has in effect is enforcing something as, based on something that's no longer of any force and effect.
Correct.
So there's really no point for the, there's no point for the county to have that resolution.
Exactly. Exactly. So, Mr. Stepp, you want?
Yeah, no, I, it just, just as, as Patrick said, it's just, I think it's just a matter of good legislative hygiene that we still have these enforcements, and I don't want any business owner in Talbot County to feel like they could, you know, potentially be, you know, under the, under the threat of any of that. So again, under the, under the threat of, of any of that. So again, just a matter of good legislative hygiene to clean this off the books and, you know, hope to earn the support of council.
Good. Mr. Lusher?
Well, this was an utterly feckless piece of legislation that was intended to do just as little as possible and it lived down to that purpose. It's time for this to go. Good riddance.
Exactly.
No comment. No comment.
Miss Milkie? Okay. Okay. All right. Well, all right. Um, okay. Madam Secretary, is there, is, or is, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we got a motion?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Got a motion second to go ahead and approve the administrative resolution as presented. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Okay. All right.
Resolution passed. Okay. All right. Mr. Stamp, you're up next.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, Mr. Council President and members of the council under county manager tonight, report tonight. We have several boards and committee appointments. The first one requesting the reappointment of Zach Crayback and Greg Gannon to serve as alternate to the Board of Appeals.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Okay. Got a motion second?
Second.
Okay. We got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
The next would be requesting the reappointment of Terry Satchel from the Easton District and Ruth Sullivan from the Trap District to the Emergency Services Advisory Board.
Okay.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Mm-hmm.
The next is the town of Trap is requesting the appointment of Commissioner Michael Sullivan to serve on the Local Emergency Planning Committee.
I'll move to approve the appointment.
Second.
Okay. We got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
The next item requesting council's consideration for the appointment of Mr. Googie Irving III to the Police Accountability Board representing the Oxford District.
I'll move the, I'll move the nomination.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
And finally, under boards and committee appointments, requesting the appointment of Dr. James Bell to serve on the Talbot County Ethics Commission.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Put Mr. Bell on the, what committee?
Ethics.
Ethics. Yeah. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
And I'd like to invite Terry Kukulas up, your Director of Corrections, for a presentation. As he comes up, Terry this evening is asking for permission to, to approve a, a bid. The, the request is, um, to counsel is that Department of Corrections utilize FY23 contingency funds to replace a HVAC condenser coil that has failed. As you read your agenda packet, requesting council approval to utilize $31,804 in FY23 contingency funds to repair an HVAC condenser at the Department of Corrections. Martha Sparks, our Finance Director, has confirmed that sufficient funds are in place in the contingency fund for this purpose. And secondarily, that the council approve an award to Electrical Automation Services Incorporated an amount of $31,804. Quotes were received and again, money is available in the budget. And Terry is here to speak to you further about this and answer any questions you might have.
For the record, Terry Kukulas, Director of the Department of Corrections. And Mr. Stamp did such a wonderful job explaining the entire project that I'm here to accept any questions anybody might have on condenser coils and, and a chiller.
Counsel?
No questions.
No questions.
Okay. All right. Um, do, do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Okay. Okay, we got a motion second to approve the new heating replacement part for the HVAC system. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
And before Director Kukulas steps down, I do want to recognize him for his service to the county as well. And we had Cassandra in here early. We have the most amazing department heads in this county. Terry is certainly one of those. He's done an exemplary job in his tenure here. He inherited a building that's an old building.
Right.
And he's worked very diligently to replace the infrastructure in his tenure. And not to mention the wonderful programs that he's brought to the county. So thank you, Terry. And I'm sure the council feels the same way. Thank you for your service.
I'll do that much.
Exactly. Exactly. And I want, I want to jump on that too. And I really appreciate, we took a tour with you today with Mr. Lusher, Mrs. Hayth. And, and I tell you, it brought light to the gentleman that was talking to us that was incarcerated and, and turned his life around in trying to, you know, once again, he, he's from here. And, you know, it just, it just, you know, the perception of going to jail is, is in a sense, um, a, a time to rehabilitate yourself and get your life straight. And I seen that today, that, that's what you're trying to do over there. And it's, it's really encouraging that trying to help in, in people's, you know, money and tax money, what's going into that? And you, you see the benefit of that gentleman going out into public and going to be working in, in, you know, hopefully he's successful. And that was gratifying today for you, for, for you, for you to put us in that position to see that. And that just shows you, it just shows you that your program and the experience that you're trying to provide over there and, and the staff you had over there was top-notch, you know, because that, those jobs are hard. You know, not only dealing with the inmates, but just, just the, the employees and the quality of employees that you have over there. That's a tough job, day in and day out. So I want to commend you with, with what you're doing and your experience over there. And you've, you've done a great job over there. Just like Mr. Stamp said, you're, you're top-notch. Yep.
Thank you very much, Mr. Callahan.
Yep.
And, uh,
Yep.
Very few people see what happens behind the walls.
They do.
So it's really incumbent upon my staff
Yep.
to ensure that they have not only the empathy, but the security mindedness to ensure that the population is discharged in better condition than when they arrive. And they are Talbot County residents. And today's exposure was just to see what you generally don't see.
Right.
And that was to see everything from a knitting class
Right.
to an inmate who just provided a lot of information. And I think he's going to begin an LLC as Ms. Hayth suggested to him
Right.
upon his discharge.
Yep.
And, and we try to work with him as best we can.
Yep.
But my staff is also from Talbot County.
Yep. Right.
And so the reflection of a community to a corrections department is very close to reflecting what the community should want from a corrections department.
I agree.
I think we're very close and very parallel. So I,
Yep.
the fact that you recognize it is, is extremely important to me and to my staff. Because it shows that my staff have committed to doing the things that you said that you noticed that.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
So I thank you on behalf of all my staff.
No problem. No problem.
And Mr. Stamp.
Yep. Any, any other council like to say anything or?
Just echo what you said, Chuck. It was an experience to take the tour today. And when he gets out, you know, make sure that he does, you know, connect with Cassandra so that he has the resources to start that LLC properly. And any help at any time that I can give, you know, to your inmates, come in, talk to them about anything, just let me know. But great job.
I'll take you up on that. Thank you very much.
Yep. Yep. You guys good? Okay. Thanks a lot, Terry. I really appreciate it.
Counsel, the next item, I'll invite your manager of the Hawkenet Golf Course, Rich Sutter, to come forward, please. He has three items for you this evening. He's going to be discussing fees with you this evening. Uh, he's going to be seeking approval for an equipment lease. And he's going to talk to you about a creative solution to provide some lighting in the parking lot area of the golf course. He continues to do a good job out there. And he's passing things out to you, okay? And he has a tie that has love written on it.
I got a watch.
Very appropriate.
Get a watch.
Look at this. Isn't this something? Oh my goodness.
They all get to spend the night here with me and they don't get to spend with who they want to, so yeah.
Okay, yeah. Wow. Here you go. Look at this. I'd probably do well just to turn this over to Rich Sutter this evening.
You know what Rich has forgot?
What's that?
There's three votes here. There's three votes.
These are the only two that really count.
We're the only ones that count. How many golfers are here?
Rich, the floor is yours.
The floor is mine. Where would you like me to start?
Fees, please.
Which one?
Fees.
Fees. Fees is where we'll start. So we have two fees that you've received the sheets on prior. The one is the daily fees, which are the fees that we charge for people who come in on a daily basis to play at the golf course. And then the other fees are the membership fees, which are annual fees. And those fees run from March 1st to February 28th. Uh, we have slight increases in all the fees. Many reasons why, it's pretty obvious. Minimum wage increase of 75 cents per person. Most of our employees down there are minimum wage earners, part-time employees. Increases in everything from fertilizers to chemicals, sand, seed. Equipment lease increases in fees, golf cart lease increases in fees, utilities. I mean, it just goes on and on. So we have to increase those fees to take care of the cost that it takes to operate the golf course. When I increase fees there, I, I don't do it half-heartedly. You know, golf is a luxury. We don't have to play golf. It's not like going to the doctor, you know, the lawyer, the insurance agent where you have to have those things. This is an amenity for the county. And I want to try and keep it as reasonable as possible so people will feel comfortable coming out there and playing on a daily basis. So we do have to do this to operate the business effectively. But it doesn't come with an easy hand to, to raise some of those fees. Any questions on any of the fee structures there?
The only one I have, so, so the top one on the very beginning, the morning, during the weekdays is 65 and the weekend 75. So, so what, what did it go, go to? I mean, it's gone.
It went from 60 to 65 and 70 to 75. It was a $5 invoice.
Okay. Gotcha.
And can you explain how your rates compare with the rates of the other two golf courses that are local?
Sure. So when we look at these rates, the first thing I do is I look at River Marsh Golf Club down in Cambridge at the Hyatt and see where their rate structure is. And I also look at Queenstown Harbor down in Queenstown to see where they're structured. And we make sure that we come in under those two as our competitors. For example, on the membership rates, for a full single membership, at our place, we're proposing the $2,900 rate. For the same thing at River Marsh, it's $3,595. And for the same thing at Queenstown, it's $4,600. So you can see we're considerably less than those others. And in my mind, I think we put just as good of a product out there as those other two places.
Thank you.
Hey, Rich, keep, sorry, go ahead. Pete, you, you started first.
Uh, just, uh, you know, I, I, we, we have, we have seen over the last several years, all that you have done, both to upgrade the experience at, at the golf course and, and also frankly, to, to run a more effective business there to cover costs. And this, this is, this is a modest step in, in that direction. And thank you for being attentive to that.
Yeah, no, I mean, just to kind of, you know, kick off right where Pete left off here. I mean, you do incredible, incredible job out there. I mean, I think from the junior PGA to just the maintenance of the course. Keep me honest here, at one point, we were ranked one of the top, top of the nation as far as public courses?
We were. When the course opened back in the mid 70s and from the mid 70s all the way through to the late 90s, Hognet Golf Course was one of the top 25 public golf courses in the entire country that you could play.
Yeah.
Now with the big boom of courses in the late 90s and early 2000s, we fell off those rankings, but it's still a very high-quality golf course.
And there's capital investments, like I said, with the, with the irrigation and the, the pavilion updates. I mean, what a great facility we have. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah. And, and just, just a note here, the Talbot residents, I see in red here. Okay, it, it's 50 and 65.
Correct.
Okay.
Again, trying to be mindful of our citizens here and the amenity that we have. And, you know, their tax money goes into that.
Right. So that, that's really important for them to know that we're trying to really look out for people that live here too. Mm-hmm. Okay, Lynn? Okay. Okay.
Do we need a motion or?
Motion?
Yeah. Do, do we want to each one of them?
Please.
Okay. No problem.
I'll move.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll, I'll second motion.
Okay, we got a motion second to go ahead and, um, go ahead and bump these fees up a little bit. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Okay.
So the next item Rich is going to ask you for, and I'll try not to steal your thunder too much. But he's requesting council's approval to enter a lease agreement with Finch Turf Equipment. John Deere to begin in November 2023, which needs to start early because of the delay in being able to obtain this equipment. Total of three quotes were received and turf equipment was the lowest. The new lease, the new lease agreement would be a fair market value lease for the term of 60 months and the amount of 369,859.40. Again, he's requesting approval now because there's a need for a lead time. This would be a FY24 budget and he, he's here to answer any further questions on that matter.
So just to clarify, the equipment that we use on the golf course to maintain the golf course, we lease that equipment. Purchasing it and, you know, how much wear and tear it takes is just not a good business practice. And our current lease with Jacobson, that equipment expires in November of this year. It's about a year lead time to get this stuff. So we're trying to stay out in front of it so that we don't get into a point where we can't maintain the golf course to the ability we need to.
Okay. Any questions, counsel?
No.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second to go ahead and, um, to lease this equipment. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
And finally, Rich is going to talk to you about a creative solution. So, you know, obviously those of you have been out at Hognet Golf Course at night, you know that there is a lighting issue, generally speaking, but certainly in the parking lot. But Rich was able to work with others on our team to identify some light poles that are going to be decommissioned at the Black and Decker facility. So he's going to be, he's asking you tonight to approve, approve a lighting project for the parking lot of Hognet Golf Course. The project will repurpose nine 30-foot light poles from the Talbot County Business Center property. The golf course has FY23 budgeted funds of $75,000 for this project. A quote from Musco Lighting, which he's recommending is $83,707. He believes he can cover it. In his budget, we, we have looked at that and we agree. And so he's here to ask for your permission to move forward with this project and he can answer more questions.
So we're a sunup to sundown business currently. And with the new pavilion, we'd like to be able to sell that events into the evening hours. And we need to get the lighting out there for safety purposes. We are repurposing some of the light poles, help save some money from there, taking those from the Black and Decker building, nine 30-foot poles and bringing them over to the golf course. And I may be able to have some additional savings too, because my good friend back here behind me, Brian Moore, has said he's willing to help me out there too a little bit. So we'll see what I can do to shave off any of that overage also.
So question, it, it, is all we, all do we have is nine or is there more?
There's nine. So
There's only nine?
The main parking lot structure, which you know runs down, there's going to be five light poles down through that area.
Okay.
And then the area of the parking lot, which heads down towards the dumpsters there, there's three that would go in there.
Okay.
And one additional pole over in the small parking area by the pavilion.
Great.
That will, that will cover all that parking lot lighting that we need out there.
That's, that's good. Because when you had that awesome party out there this winter, I mean, it, it definitely was, was dark.
If you remember, we had to rent two light towers to light it up.
Yes, exactly.
They're not cheap on a daily basis to do that. So this definitely solves that problem.
That's, that's great. But, but, but I was just curious though, when we're taking all the lights down, there's only nine?
Correct. Well, no, oh, at Black and Decker building, there's way more than nine.
Is it?
Oh, yeah. Way, way more. There's, I didn't get a full count, but there's probably 25 to 30 light poles over there. We just need, we just need nine of them.
So not, not to get hung up on the light thing, that, that might be something that we, we think about, keep, keeping some. Because, you know, actually coming down that road is, is very dark too. So I, you know, I'm just So I, you know, I'm just saying out loud, that might be something we build off of.
Correct.
You know, down the road going out.
Yeah, and I believe that, I don't want to speak out of school, but I think there might have been some talk, too, about maybe the new sheriff's office maybe using some of those also.
Okay, yeah, yeah. We'll keep you busy, Brian, out there. Yeah, so it might be something, you know, so, okay. Any other questions, counsel?
No, I love the, I love the idea, love the fact that we can repurpose them, and I definitely think it helps set us up long-term. I know some of the conversations we had about some, you know, some of the long-term plans out to, out to the golf course, I think it just, it helps set those up, and, you know, all good things for the county.
Yeah, great, great.
I move approval.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion in, I think, two seconds. So, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
And once again, we've had a lot of phenomenal department heads here, and, you know, we want to include you, that's for sure, because in the last two, three years that you've taken things over, you know, you've done a phenomenal job out there in your staff. You really, really have. I mean, what you did with, you know, the pavilion is spectacular, and I hope, you know, we get, we should be able to get a lot of, you know, people to rent that, that's for sure, because you've done a great job.
Thank you, sir.
There's more to come with the pavilion. Yeah, I know, so, but Rich, you're doing a great job out there. I mean, it's just such a, you know, going down Route 50, and you're such a big pillar in, you know, with the golf course here and the ice rink over, and we're getting ready to start the, you know, gymnasium over there, too, so, you know, it's, we've got a lot of stuff going on over there, you and Preston, so you guys are doing a great job.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Thanks for letting me get ahead of Mr. Clark, that's never happened before.
I know, I know, yeah.
It's like Christmas for me.
I know, it's close, it's Valentine's Day, you know, it's close.
Thank you, Rich.
All right, I appreciate it.
Okay, counsel, I'd like to invite Brian Moore up, and Brian comes up, I would just like to announce to the public, and of course, you know, counsel, you approved, we just finished a reorganization. Mr. Warren Edwards is going to be retiring, our superintendent of roads. We took the opportunity to evaluate the process, and we were able to consolidate two departments. Brian is now the superintendent of roads and facilities for the county. Brian has over 28 years of service to Talbot County. And for those of you that know Brian, he doesn't really like to be up here tonight. He's a man of few words, but he's very good at getting things done. And so I'll say a few things for him, so he has to say less words, but he's here tonight to ask counsel's consideration to award bid 2203, re-roofing of sections of the Talbot County Circuit Courthouse, 11 North Washington Street. As you read in your agenda packet, requesting counsel approval of this bid, and add alternate one to the low bidder of AKJ of Stevensville, Maryland, in the sum of $232,500, contingent upon permit approval from the Town of Easton Historical Commission. A total of five bids were submitted. Additionally, seeking counsel approval to award add alternate two, repainting of the dome roof of the courthouse to AKJ in the amount of $14,750. There are sufficient funds in the FY23 budget for both projects. Brian is here to give you any more information he'd like to and answer any questions you have.
I just want to thank everybody for their time. Appreciate Clay and the overview. We've just, it's time to do something with the roof. We've done patch repairs.
Can you come up just along the microphone?
I apologize.
No problem.
It's just time to do the roof. We're repairing, roof is 70 years old, and it's failing, it's been failing. We've been putting it off, and it's just time that we need to move forward with this project.
Well, with the proposed material, you ought to be able to get a good 50 years out of the next roof. I understand that this award of bid is contingent on approval, review and approval by the Easton Historic District Commission.
That's correct, yes. Just would select the contractor and start that process.
What's the difference in the lifespan between the artificial slate and natural slate? Do you have any sense of that?
I do. The artificial slate, which we're proposing, should have about an 80-year lifespan on it. The real slate is about the same, 70 to 80, but the quality of the slates these days is comparable, you know, it's, we've, the slates that we're replacing are 70 years old, and they're just deteriorated to the point, and it's, you're not going to get, in my opinion, from researching, 70 years on a slate nowadays. And it's a safety factor, too, with the slates. We've had several incidents with slates sliding off the roof. We've had them hit cars on Dover Street. We've had some very near misses with people, so it's a bit of a safety issue, too. And we're eventually going to have to replace in the north wing, so it's, we're slowly working through that process.
Yeah. Any other questions from counsel? And you're
Go ahead, Mr. Lusher. If not, I'll move approval.
I just, yeah, I just had one thing, and you feel pretty comfortable with AKJ, you know, the pricing, you know, it's, I'm looking at it here, and it's really good pricing, but you're comfortable with that flex, that fluctuation, like?
The price does concern me.
Yeah.
But I have done the research to visit their jobs. They did a lot of work up to University of Maryland College Park.
Okay.
And they spoke very highly of them, and everything that I've checked out seemed to work, so
Yeah.
we are taking a little bit of risk, because they are considerably low bid, but all the references have checked out.
Right.
And comparable jobs have checked out, so
That's good.
I'm having a hard time disqualify them, so hopefully for the best, and it'll work out.
All right, all right. That sounds good. Okay.
With that, I'll move approval.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion second to go ahead and award this bid for the roof of courthouse here. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Okay.
Good job, Brian.
And Brian, congratulations, and once again, we're all kudos to all the department heads, and you've got two of them now. So I want to personally
Two heads.
You've got two heads, yeah, two heads. So, you know, really appreciate you sort of taking on that responsibility. You definitely, you definitely earned it. You definitely have the experience to do it, and it's a pleasure working with you.
I appreciate it.
You do a great job.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
And counsel, the last item, I have to invite Ray Clark up here, your county engineer. Ray's here this evening to ask counsel's approval to award bid 2217, Talbot County Free Library Brewery. As you read in your agenda packet, requesting counsel approval to award that bid to the low bidder, Daily Computers, in the amount of $85,048. A total of two bids were received, there are sufficient funds in the FY23 budget for this project. Ray can answer any further questions on this project.
Or any other information?
I just know, I did work with the library. The library did hire a consultant to prepare the specifications as well as review the bids, so we're just, you know, in this situation, assisting the library in this bid process.
Right. Good. Lusher?
Well, I know that this was, this was a project that was discussed and budgeted by the, by the previous counsel, was identified as a top priority for the library to update their presentation equipment in the meeting room. They're doing more and more in the way of hybrid meetings, and this will, this will increase their capabilities and really bring them up. I think the technology in there is over 10 years old now. Give them the modern meeting facilities that, a modern public library ought to have.
Right. Good, well said. Any other body, anything?
Then I'll, then I'll move for approval.
Okay.
Second.
We've got a motion second to go ahead and buy the new computers for the library. Madam Secretary, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Ray, you got off easy tonight.
I did, thank you.
You did.
Well, before Ray sits down, I mean, again, once again.
Again, again.
Once again. As the county manager, one of the best parts of my job is to work with such incredible department heads, day in and day out. They're professionals, they work hard, they care for their community, and you've seen just a snapshot of them, so, and Ray is certainly one of those, we see a lot up here.
We sure do, so, thanks a lot, Ray. I appreciate everything you're doing for us.
No problem, no problem. Enjoy it.
Okay.
Thank you, Ray.
Mr. Counsel President, members of the council, that concludes your county manager report for this evening.
Okay, that's great. Good, good job, Mr. Stamps. You've done a great job tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Yep. Okay, public comment, do we have a list out there?
Nobody signed up this evening.
Nobody signed up? Okay, so, all right, all right, we've got three gentlemen out here. Anybody want to come up for public comment?
I'm fine.
You sure?
Yeah, I went to the meeting this morning, the police accountability meeting.
Well, come on up here.
That was excellent.
Okay, okay, all right, okay.
They're going to work together.
That's good, that's great. Well, I'd like for you to come up here so people can hear what you said, because that's a very important, yes. Tell everybody who you are now.
Yeah, Terrence Bernard, citizen. The meeting that I went to this morning, I went to the first one, and the second one here went really well.
Well, tell them what kind of meeting you were at.
The police accountability meeting, the commissioners.
Yeah.
Yeah, it went well.
Well, that's great.
They're planning how they're going to perform and what their objectives are, and both sides, they asked each other across the means there, what do you think about this? What do you need from me? What can I give you back? What type of form do you want? And it came down to, the form wasn't important, it's more the substance that you're paying attention and documenting everything appropriately, and there's no need to go back to.
That's great.
Yeah, it was curiosity upfront, when this accountability board was coming, coming to be, being a resident here in Easton, and now I'm comfortable with it. You know, two sides are ready to work together.
Well, that's great, that's great.
And get it done correctly for us.
Well, we really appreciate you being involved and telling us all about that, because that's, that's important to the community, too, to throw a positive message on that, because that's what we want. That's what it's supposed to be doing.
Yes.
Yep, so
And that's the way to attend.
Okay, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, all right. Anybody else? Jeff? No, okay, okay. Thank you, thank you. Okay, yeah. All right, okay, let's start off with counsel comments. Start off with you, Mr. Step.
Just kind of as usual, I mean, just a lot of, lot of things counsel's been busy at over the last, since we last met on, what was it, 24th of January? I was in attendance at the local emergency planning committee meeting, great meeting there, we had National Weather Service come in and speak to us. We had our Public Works 2023 report of the report, thanks to the great efforts from Ray and team, met with the towns, what was that, last Tuesday, I believe, already now? Great meetings to see where our municipalities are doing, so a lot of great things happening in between, you know, these, these every-two-week meetings that we have here, so.
Yeah, that's great. Mr. Vice President?
Yeah, I will be on Capitol Hill in two weeks for Museums Advocacy Day. I have yet to have my final meeting scheduled for that day with our congressional offices, but I've requested early times so I can be back here for the workshop with Easton Utilities. I will, if there is anything that could make me late, I will communicate that as soon as I know it. Reflecting on what Mr. Step said, the beginning, the beginning of a council term is full of opportunities to learn anew about the good work accomplished by our county departments and agencies, and the past three weeks have been no exception. With my first look at our repurposing center on the St. Michael's Road, an orientation to the services provided by the University of Maryland Agricultural Extension, and a tour of our detention center, as we mentioned earlier, just this afternoon. But perhaps the most impactful in this past period was our meeting last week with the Talbot Fire and Rescue Association, with representatives of our seven, seven volunteer fire companies. Several of these companies face serious challenges in recruitment and retention of volunteers, and significantly, they brought concrete proposals forward, including first-time home buyers assistance for qualified active volunteers and income tax assistance, reflecting one that is offered by the state and that can also be offered by the county. There can be no doubt that this and other proposals will come at a cost to Talbot County taxpayers if implemented, but we will have to weigh, is that cost perhaps less than the cost of not taking one or more of those actions? So I'm posed to hear those, more from them and to give them serious consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Lusher. Ms. Milkie?
I'd just like to wish everybody a happy Valentine's Day, and let's go eat chocolate.
There you go.
I second that.
Okay, well, I'll end it, I know we've had a great meeting, a lot of information, great department heads tonight. It was, it was great. I want to commend you guys up here, too, Jess and Susan and Clay and Patrick, really appreciate all the hard work you're doing, because you make us look good, and I keep saying that all the time, and you're really doing, look out for us. So, other than that, Mr. Lusher, you want to go ahead and wrap things up for us?
The county council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, February 28th, beginning at 6 o'clock PM. The council will be convening at 3 o'clock PM for a work session with Easton Utilities for an update on the Connect Talbot Project, and then adjourning into closed session to discuss real estate, legal, and personnel matters, as listed on the statement for closing that meeting. Therefore, there is a motion to adjourn this meeting and reconvene, as noted.
So moved.
Okay, we've got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth? Aye.
All right. Appreciate, thanks, thanks, guys, for coming out. Appreciate it.